The regular meeting of the Putnam County School Board on Tuesday, June 14th, is now in session. Before we have our Pledge the Flag, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent for our superintendent to join us via video.
I recommend that we give unanimous consent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to allow the superintendent to come in with us. A motion carries. Oh, okay.
We'll let him.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero. We'll have our Pledge Allegiance by Ms. Jane Crawford and our invocation by Ms. Sandra Gillyard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of your Son, Jesus, God, we come today, God, thanking you for your blessings, thanking you, God, for your safety. Not only for that, God, but for a safe year for our children, for our staff, oh, God, we give you honor, praise, and glory. God, we thank you for those that worked hard to make sure that our children did their very best, for those that graduated. God, now we ask for your divine guidance through this meeting, that our hearts and our minds will be open, and that we will remember, God, our number one goal, that we have been entrusted with the lives and the education of these young people. Help us to be examples, God, forgive us all that we have done today that has not been pleasing unto you, and help us, oh, God, to realize that we're greater together. We ask all of this in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, our first presentation today is by Ms. April Griffin, a Master Board presentation.
Do I come here?
Yes.
Should've gotten the lay of the land before I started. Thank you for having me tonight. As Ms. Pickens said, my name is April Griffin. I am one of the consultants for the Florida School Boards Association, and tonight is my great honor and privilege to present the Putnam County School Board Superintendent with their Master Board plaque for their Master Board distinction. And just a little bit about the program. The Master Board program is governance team training, and it's designed to strengthen the team's ability to work effectively, efficiently, and collectively while keeping a focus on the student's achievement and everything else that's going on in the district. It's twenty hours of training, and we completed this several months ago. It's just taken me a while to get to you. And I do have to say, as a new resident of Putnam County, I am very honored to have been able to work with you to get to know y'all better. It was a real pleasure.
Same here.
And so if y'all mind coming down, we'll take a picture. Well, somebody will take a picture, I'm sure.
Where's Ash?
Would you, do you mind your in the middle?
I didn't go to any of that stuff, did I?
Yeah, you came.
I think we threw you on.
You didn't? I didn't know if you wanted to go over there and take a picture.
You're in it.
Rick! People are coming on the bus now.
It worked.
So you get right up here with her. Yes, there you go. You're here in theory. Carolyn's gonna send y'all a press release.
Thank you so much. Yes, you can. Bless you.
Congratulations.
All right.
Okay, I don't get to hug you two, huh?
Sorry, I mean, oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, April.
Yes, Mrs. Griffin.
Thank you for all y'all do. Okay, our next presentation, the Mental Health Awareness Poster Contest Winners by Ms. Stephanie Wellen.
My name is Stephanie Wellen. I coordinate behavioral health for Putnam County School District. And so we are excited to be here today and to recognize a few individuals who did participate in our poster and/or essay contest. During the month of May, we recognize all across the nation, sorry about that, we recognize all across the nation, mental health awareness. Okay, we promote that through education, information, and knowledge, and all of those resources. And so, and the goal of Mental Health Awareness Month is to reduce stigma associated with perceptions about mental health, and by reducing stigma, we are able to decrease barriers that prevent or supersede individuals, adults, and children with receiving access to the mental health support and services that are so dearly needed. So in our department, the school-based mental wellness department, we have taken it upon ourselves to sponsor a poster and essay contest. And I will add that, is Ms. Solomon here? Oh, come on, sweetie, I didn't see you. Jennifer, I don't have my glasses, though. Come on, Jennifer, okay. Okay, I was looking around for you and I didn't see you. Jennifer, I guess you changed your hair, okay. All righty. Okay, and so we are so pleased to be able to recognize all of the contributions that a few individuals have played in making this poster contest, an essay contest, a success. This is our second year, and we're growing. So I'd like to start with providing your certificate of appreciation to Ms. Virginia Solomon. Let me just tell you about this young lady. This certificate of appreciation is awarded to Ms. Virginia Solomon, who is a STEM class instructor at James A. Long Elementary School here in Polack. She answered the call, and she went above and beyond. Her students submitted over, was it four hundred? Four hundred posters.
Wow.
Four hundred, and we are hoping to have those laminated and posted somewhere at various locations throughout the school district. And they, through drawings and art, captured a lot of feelings and emotions, and they told a great story about mental health and how important it is. They spoke volumes about this topic. And so, Ms. Virginia, you are awarded, you have earned this certificate for STEM class participation in our Mental Health Awareness Month and poster contest. And she was awarded, pretty nice, I need to get that to you, some gift cards that will allow her, okay, to continue this effort next year. And she didn't ask for anything, she did it on her own. Okay, so we'd like to applaud you. And we have Ms. Jennifer Purefoy, who is here. And she answered the call as a guidance counselor who disseminated this information. The call went out to all guidance counselors across the district. And she showed up, so thank you. I don't have her certificate, but thank you. All right. And our next, our next certificate is awarded to our director, Mr. Randall Hedstrom. He's not here.
Yes, he is.
You know what, what is going on? Why are you guys hiding? Put on my glasses, come up.
You can't see me yet.
I see you now. But as we all know, Randy goes above and beyond, okay? He is a silent partner in all this, but needless to say, he is a partner, and he supports us from behind the scene. So, Mr. Hedstrom, thank you, and we have our certificate for your contributions made to our Mental Health Awareness Month and our poster and essay contest. This belongs to you. Thank you so much. And next, we would offer our appreciation to Ms. Nakia Washington. If you frequented the district office during the month of May, you would have seen an elaborate, I say, display of paparazzi jewelry. Nakia is a school counselor, and she's under our department as recent as of this year. And she sells paparazzi jewelry, but she donated hundreds and hundreds of dollars worth of jewelry and didn't ask for anything in return to support this cause.
Awesome.
So congratulations also go out to Ms. Nakia Washington, and she wasn't able to be here with us. And our first place winner of our Mental Health Awareness Month Essay Contest was Ms. Veronica Shorter. Unfortunately, she's not able to be here, she has a J O B. Okay?
Has like that.
And she writes very eloquently. And so she won last year, our first place contest, and she won again this year. So congratulations to, congratulations to Ms. Veronica Shorter. I have a. And so we are fortunate and blessed to have with us Ms. Jayden Williamson. Come up. Isn't she pretty? And Ms. Jayden Williamson, we'd like to award you the Certificate of Achievement. You have earned this as a result of earning, winning second place in our Mental Health Awareness Month Essay Contest. Congratulations. Would you like to have anything to say? And we, okay, and we thank you all for your support of our program.
Stephanie, before you get the shot, thank you for what you do.
You're welcome.
I just, we just need to see you more often, and you tell us what you need for us to help.
You really want me to tell you?
I think the superintendent would like to hear it whenever you get a chance.
Okay, yes. All right. Thank you. Proud of you.
Need a wide angle for Hedstrom.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Charlie, pass the tissue down to Bud. He had tears in his eyes.
And our next, save the best for last, presentation, the Educational Foundation of Putnam County Scholarship Presentation by Mr. Mike Perry.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I don't know what it is, but every time I approach a podium, I have this compulsion to say, may it please the court? I want to try not to do that today.
Well, if it, if it doesn't bother your feelings, if you had a crew cut, you'd look like your dad.
Uh-oh. Well, thank you, Mr. Buckles.
That's a compliment.
Madam Chair, it's my pleasure to be here today in my capacity as the Executive Director of the Education Foundation of Putnam County Incorporated. I am joined here today with several of our Board of Directors, who I'd like to ask to come forward, if you don't mind, at this time. Although it's been some time since I appeared before this board, I think that you will be pleased by the direction the Education Foundation has taken. We, like you, are dedicated to improving education in Putnam County, and today, we're going to prove it. Before our first presentation, may I take a moment to thank the following persons for supporting our Education Foundation through the Payroll Deduction Program. Mr. David Buckles, Ms. Jane Crawford, Ms. Sandra Gillyard, Ms. Rhonda Odom, Ms. Tanya Whitehurst, thank you very much. And we would also like to especially thank our excellent Superintendent, Dr. Rick Surense. Dr. Surense not only contributes to our organization through the Payroll Deduction Program, but he has, on several occasions, directed other funds that he has earned to our Education Foundation. Thank you, Dr. Surense.
Awesome.
A few weeks ago, Ms. Whitehurst notified me of a need within the Para-to-Pro Program. After learning more about the program, our board immediately allocated the requested funds to assist these new teachers with their tuition, and they'll each receive a $500 check today. I'd like to thank Tanya for letting us know about this need, and I would encourage any other district administrators or teachers to simply let us know how we can help. The recipients today are Catherine Sullivan and Esmerella Arvalo. Are you here today? Please, come up. The checks will be presented by our Board members, Lulagale Parish, a former teacher, and Ms. Susan Gaborio, a current teacher. Why don't y'all come out front here, if you don't mind?
I'm so proud of you.
Yay! I just want to say a couple of things. Number one, we are so excited to support this endeavor, and we appreciate that you have spent time already in our district, helping our children, helping our teachers, and we're excited for you to continue on your journey and that we can help just a little bit with that. So, thank you.
You want to get a picture?
No, Tanya's going to look at it.
Lulagale, okay, just, just, they're gonna be, y'all are gonna all be in the picture?
Yeah. Come on, get out there. Come on, Chris, so y'all get in the picture. We're bad, we understand you're working.
Yeah, well, if you're following Les Sims, you're lost, I can tell you that.
You waiting for a sign? I'm sorry? No, you go ahead. Go ahead, I have, I have some other things to tend to.
You could just get right there on the end.
Okay, don't go anywhere, that's all right.
Let Vernon sneak out.
I did not know you had payroll deduction for that.
We do.
He'll sign up.
Well, I imagine so. A short time ago, I met with the Director of Teaching and Learning, Jen Azula, and her team about funding a new and innovative reading program. Ms. Azula's team came to our recent board member, board meeting and explained this program to us in detail. I am proud to announce that today, the Education Foundation of Putnam County will present a check in the amount of $20,500, which will fully fund the Multi-Sensory Learning Program.
Wonderful.
Ms. Pickens, will you accept this check?
Wow.
Jen is right there. Jen's right here.
Oh, Jen. I didn't know who I'm supposed to give it to.
Multi-sensory what?
You need to go down there.
Go down there, Holly.
What's it called, Mike? Multi-sensory?
Multi-Sensory Learning Program.
We used to call it kinesthetic auditory and everything, other stuff.
What a blessing.
It's the same, Rick's not here. Holly makes less look better.
Holly helps me.
That is, yes, it is.
Madam Chair.
You're not mine.
Madam Chair, I'll leave you today, if you don't mind, with the words of Abraham Lincoln, who once said, "Upon the subject of education, I can only say that I view it as the most important subject which we, as a people, can be engaged in." His words ring true today. The Education Foundation of Putnam County is engaged in supporting and promoting education in our county, and we look forward to continuing to build our relationship with the Putnam County School District. Thank you, and good afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you, and good afternoon.
Mike, I have one more que, Mike, Mike, I have one question before you leave.
Yes, sir.
As you, as you have contacts with other foundations, keep us abreast if there's something that we, as a district, can continue to do to enhance the ability to raise funding or create avenues for, you know, any kind of matching funds or things that we can do.
Certainly.
Because it, I still think we're just, you're just now starting to blossom and get to the point that we're going to start seeing.
Well, Mr. Buckles, you're exactly right, and I will do that for you and the board. And I will say that in the coming days, in the very short future, you're going to see us more and more involved, and you'll see some scholarships being awarded at the end of this month, a considerable amount of scholarships, and some other things that I will report back to the board and let you know what we're doing. But thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much, the Education Foundation Board. We're very fortunate. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to, we have no public hearing, so we'll move to the consent agenda. Ms. Gillyard, do you have anything?
No, ma'am, I have nothing to pull.
And Mr. Buckles?
No, ma'am, I don't, I've been through it, and I feel very comfortable.
Mr. McGinnis?
Have nothing to pull.
Ms. Crawford?
Nothing.
And I also have nothing.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second that. We have a motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis and a second by Ms. Jane Crawford to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero. Okay, we are out of regular session, and we'll go into emergency session. We have eight items to consider. The first is the license, see, notice of cancellation.
This has been, this, this notice of cancellation is the license notice, calls eight point one of contact by Putnam County School District, that's the one you're talking about? This one, this one here, Holly?
This one, yes.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard to approve item one in the emergency section. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero.
Madam?
Okay, go ahead.
I was going to say, Madam Chair, emergency item number two, letter of lease agreement between the Putnam County School District, St. John's River State College, justification, explanation, time sensitive, I make all for motion that we accept this.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard and a second by Mr. David Buckles to accept item two in the emergency session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the RFP number 540312220, Contracted Carpet Cleaning, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Ms. Jane Crawford and a second by Mr. David Buckles to accept item three under the emergency session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, emergency item number four, the FACTE invoice number 0598, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis and a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard to accept item four under the emergency session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, emergency item number five, St. John's River State College invoice, justification, explanation, time sensitive, move acceptance.
I'll se, go ahead, Jane, or I'll second it, whatever.
We have a motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard and a second by Mr. David Buckles to accept item five under the emergency session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we accept Medex Medical Express, this is emergency item number six, the invoice is number 3968, and the justification explanation is that it is time sensitive.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Jane Crawford and a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard to accept item six under the emergency session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, emergency item number seven, the 2021-2022 Personnel allocations change number 28, 28.1 through 28.4, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis and a second by Mr. David Buckles to accept item seven under the emergency session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept emergency item number eight, 2022-2023 Personnel Allocation Change number three, 3.1 dash 3.4, or two 3.4, and justification, explanation is time sensitive.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Jane Crawford to accept item eight under the emergency session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero. We are out of emergency session, back into regular session. We have no unfinished business, but we have some new business. Our first item is to appoint board members to serve as representative and alternate on the Florida School Boards Association Advocacy Committee. Which was formerly known as the Legislative.
I'd like, Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Mr. David Buckles.
I'll second that.
Save your speech until after we vote it.
This is going to be the Value Adjustment Board.
No, this is the first one.
No, that's the next one, that's number two.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got you.
No, you got, yeah.
All righty.
You're the one that has all that legislative know-how.
I just, I know Bud McGinnis.
What's that?
I don't know, he's probably pulling a trick on me here. That's fine.
Well, it says a representative and alternate.
You want the right man.
I don't know.
Holly, you want to be the alternate?
I need an alternate, and I.
I'll be the alternate.
Holly would do that, I would be, I would be much obliged.
I make a motion that we accept David Buckles as our appointment to the Advocacy Committee and Holly Pickens, our chairman, as the alternate.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Jane Crawford and a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard to accept David Buckles as our representative and Holly Pickens as our alternate.
Oh, a citizen.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero. Our second item is to appoint board members as representative and alternate to serve on the Putnam County Value Adjustment Board.
Ms. Gillyard, would you like to continue in that position?
I would definitely love to continue.
I would like to appoint you.
I'll second that.
Do you need an alternate? Yes?
We also need an alternate.
Bud?
I don't mind being an alternate.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a short timer, so I don't think I should be appointed.
Will you give me a, a motion?
I make a, well, Jane, go ahead and make a motion.
I make a motion that we appoint Ms. Sandra Gillyard as our representative to the Putnam County Value Adjustment Board and Bud McGinnis as our alternate.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Jane Crawford and a second by Mr. David Buckles to accept Ms. Sandra Gillyard as our representative and Mr. Bud McGinnis as our alternate on the Putnam County Value Adjustment Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero. Our last item is to appoint a citizen to represent the board on the Putnam County Value Adjustment Board.
It's usually Judd. Do you have any, is that a dog group that we consider?
Oh, okay. So do we still need to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we report Judd Newfield to the Value Adjustment Board.
Second.
We have a, a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard to accept Mr. Judd Newfield as our citizen to represent the board on the Putnam County Value Adjustment Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero. We now have reports by our board members. Ms. Crawford, would you like to go first?
Yeah, I just briefly want to say how wonderful every graduation ceremony was. You know, when, I didn't think one could be any better than the next, and they were all. Uh, you know, when, I didn't think one could be any better than the next, and they were all fabulous and went on without incident, which is always wonderful. Um, so kudos to everybody who had a part in putting on those fabulous events. We have a lot of wonderful graduates in Putnam County this year. And then the second thing I wanted to say, and I'll be through, is I, I've noticed on Facebook and other places, there are a lot of teachers that finish the last day of school and they're back at school in training. I mean, it's, it's never-ending, and I think that says a lot for the dedication of our teachers to be involved in trainings throughout the summer. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Mr. McGinnis?
Okay. Well, happy Flag Day, everybody.
Happy Flag Day.
Happy Flag Day.
And, uh, I wanna congratulate those poster and the essay contest winners. Um, I'm excited to see what kind of presentation all the art would be like.
Yeah.
It, uh, when you speak of that kind of, uh, mental illness and when kids can share their views, it makes it come home and it brings it all together a lot better. I wanna thank the foundation for their wonderful gift, and, uh, I think our foundation is on the brink of just exploding in Putnam County, and it's all a good thing for us. I agree, a shout-out to all the attendees of the graduations. It kicked off at Mellon Learning Center for me and went on, and I have one more with the, uh, general diploma, general education diploma, uh, graduation on the twenty-fifth, so I'm looking forward to that. But each one, each graduation is unique in its own right, and I'm looking forward, just as an observer and in the county, a county in here, to see what kind of traditions all the junior, senior high schools will carry over, because I know Interlochen has one, and you just kinda get overwhelmed with all the folks that are there, and it should be a, it should be a, you know, an accentuation to the commitment our families have to their students at that time of the year. And graduation is huge in Putnam County.
Sure is.
And, um, I just wanna, uh, I attended the Florida School Board Association, uh, training last week, conference, the summer conference, and there were a couple of, uh, workshops, I guess, or groups that we broke into. One in particular is, um, Mr. A.J. Crabill, and we are gonna look and see if he has a book, but he had some really outs, uh, just eye-opening, just the way that we, made me think about, uh, what I as a school board should be looking at and focusing on, because we always are focusing on, uh, the process, and we kinda get mired in the process and we kinda overlook the outcomes that we're getting. His, his thing, this was his big thing, student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change, and he went on with that, several examples, and one of them in particular that we could look at was, would be our accelerated reading, um, program, and, um, you know, I've shared this with, um, with our district here, and hopefully we can come, I know with the new legislation with DeSantis on, uh, testing that we will get a better grasp on what we're looking at in August, and look forward to maybe having a workshop planned for us if the board would like to do that, but that's, that's where, um, that one just did me big, that we've just been, we have to be in, more focused on the outcomes rather than what's, we're putting in, putting in, and, uh, and we've done so well with our graduations rates, we're not overlooking anything, so, and I'm very encouraged about the, the grant, or the, the, yeah, the grant that, uh, well, not a grant, the fully funded multisensory learning program that Mrs. Zula provided that gave us the assistance to have. Thank you. That should do wonders too. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Mr. Buckles?
I would like to first commend the board for pursuing the master training, which I've been through so many times, it doesn't mean I can't learn more stuff, but I, I just, I was very pleased. You've come a long way. I, I think this board is really, uh, highly functioning and, and has a total commitment and district commitment to, uh, to do what it is we do, and that's to serve the needs of the children that we have in Putnam County, and I would like to echo what Ms. Crawford said about our graduation ceremonies, and I, you know, you can't grasp the, the gravity of, of the, of the planning and the things that go into everybody's mind trying to keep an event like that safe, given the situations around the country. And to know, you know, I, I, during the Palaka High, at the end of the graduation, some of the folks didn't get to go on the field, but there were other underlying factors that caused that, and they had to come back and after the, the building was exited for a variety of reasons, um, due to some unrest in the community. And we had, we had a wonderful, uh, showing of law enforcement from all of our Putnam County Sheriff's Office, our, all of our municipalities that, that, that were at Palaka Police, our guardians, uh, attended, and you, you don't, you, you can't take anything for granted, and, uh, I looked at Stephanie, uh, well, and earlier with her awards on, and, and, and work in, in mental health and awareness. Our job continues to be complex and critical in all those areas, but then you bring Mike Perry and the foundation board up, and you realize that at some point, if they can continue to grow, and they will, under that leadership of that board, I mean, they can choose to help even, even with security funding, and, and there are a variety of things that they can do to improve opportunities, uh, for students in our system, and whether it's safety or instruction, uh, helping prospective employees, uh, the sky is the limit, and I'm just so thankful that they're, they're doing what they do, and with that, I just can't say enough for all the teachers and, and good things about whether you're a bus driver or a teacher or a custodian or, or assistant superintendent, you've done a, done a fine job, and we got through this year, and we're already getting ready for next year, so that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Ms. Gillyard?
Yes, ma'am. Just to reiterate and say kudos, ditto to everything I've heard regarding graduation. It certainly makes you proud to be a citizen in Putnam County, when we see the way that our students behaved and, and to see some of the expressions on their faces when it dawned on them that this is it, you know? They came off the stage and some had tears and some were rejoicing, but uh, I think we have given them, uh, a great leg up, and not we, well, yes, I can say we, because as a part of the master board, one of the things they gave us was a puzzle piece, and it said that it took all of us, that means our district personnel, the ones that Mr. Buckles named, our drivers, our food service workers. It takes every piece of that puzzle to make the things happen in Putnam County the way that they happen. So, I'm excited, and I've been here for
Couple of years.
Yeah, a couple of years, and I don't plan on going anywhere, and I just see things getting even better. Want to congratulate our retirees, we had four, that we did sign their, uh, certificate. I do want to say, this, this came across me today like heavy. It, to me, it is just so important that when a person has given their best, in some cases, their all to a district to working with children, and yes, we give them a certificate, and yes, their schools may do things, but I think they need to come before the board, even if we have to stagger it, uh, Mrs. Whitehurst, even if we have to do a couple in, in April, May, June, and, 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 and send them away. Let me tell you, I'm okay with it, because when I retired, after giving my everything, that was it. I don't have a certificate to show anybody. Got a beautiful letter that you sent, uh, that, that you sent it by Phyllis, and, and I'm keeping it. We may think that that piece of paper is not really important to those people, it is. It says, I care, I saw what you did, I appreciate it, I may not have told you, thank you for every year that you served, but I noticed that, I heard about it, and, and I'd like to have us look into that, we need to.
Well, there's no reason why we can't.
Yes, most definitely, and then now that we are properly on the downside of COVID, I'd like for us to go back to that twenty-year recognition as well.
Well, I think we probably COVID kept, 'cause we used to invite the, um, retirees to get their certificates. Oh.
Right, the only, the only ones I remember since I've been on the board, this is term two, was the administrators, Jerome Wilkerson and a few others that came with him, they came up, but, 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 yes. And so, to the retirees, Lisa Spell for twenty-two years and nine months, thank you. Janet Green, thirty-one years, nine months, appreciate all that you have done. To Lisa Ledbetter, twenty-four years, eight months, thank you, even with health challenges, thank you. To Kevin Denson, nineteen years, five months, thank you, and we appreciate all that you do. And yes, that certificate is important, and we've signed it, but I'd like for folk to put a face with the name. All right, I'm done.
Well, I had to send you a letter.
I'll drop the mic.
I had to send you a letter, 'cause when you taught me when I was a student in school, I, you know, you, you were really nice to me, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Gillyard. It, Ms. Gillyard's a tough act to follow, I'm just.
She is. That's the preacher in me.
Right.
That's the preacher in me.
I will say that, uh, being the last board member to speak, most everything has been said, that I would say.
It's a tough place to be in.
I will say that when we left our last, um, board meeting, as I was almost to the red light, um, I heard on the radio about the shooting in Texas.
Yes.
That was the first I'd heard, and I, I'm pretty sure that was the first probably anybody heard, 'cause we didn't make mention of it. But immediately I thought, you know, it could be anywhere, and it could be in Putnam County, but I do feel very comfortable with our, our school safety.
Yes.
And I know that a, a door can get propped open on any campus, but hopefully, you know, a custodian will see that and, and fix it. So, I'm just grateful to our sheriff's department, to Mr. Weaver's department, to everybody that had a hand in the guardian program. Thank you, and, uh, I will agree that graduations were all really wonderful. It's, we sit at different places at each graduation, and one, that we're right there at Palaka High when they come across, and there were a lot of students that took a deep breath, and, um, of course, I took a deep breath as they were stepping down the stairs, 'cause that's kinda, they're steep. Yeah, and they have some nice shoes, so. But anyway, they, it, it was wonderful to, to see all the difference in the graduations, but the common thread was that everybody was so excited, and, and that you could just feel the, the pride of parents and, and the students in themselves. The class of twenty-two did go through some really, really, um, rough times, and, you know, they persevered, and that's what the common thread was in all the graduation speeches, and, uh, they're to be commended for that.
Yes.
And I, I guess that's about it. I did, I did enjoy the FSBA conference. Mr. Crable was amazing. Um, he apparently has done board trainings with, with other boards. He, he was just very powerful, a great speaker, so if you catch him on YouTube, um, or something like that, I'm sure he's there. He, uh, he was very inspirational, but he did, like Mr. McGinnis said, he definitely made me, um, realize a component of my job that maybe I wasn't aware of, and, um, so I've had some meaningful conversations this past week, and, uh, when I got home, and I feel pretty confident about that, and I think we're gonna, we'll have a workshop where we, we're all on the same page. And I hadn't told, I hadn't talked to Dr. Searcy about that, but I'm finished. Um, so Charlie, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna say, uh, thank you for the opportunity to be back again at Palaka High School to give our law firm scholarship that, uh, we give every year to a deserving individual interested in, uh, law or, or going into law enforcement, and it's always fun to be back on campus to, uh, see again familiar faces, and we will continue our backpack donation too through WHIF this year. We've already, uh, purchased the backpacks and gearing up for that part of the summer where folks, uh, will be here before you know it.
I see.
All the supplies and backpacks, so, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to continue to give back.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Will Dr. Searcy, do you want, can he say something?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes. Thank you for allowing me to join. I'm at a superintendent's meeting, and sorry, can't be there. Just a couple of things I wanna mention, that we have a lot of training going on now, and, uh, credit to Jenna Zula and her staff for all the training they're doing with our teachers for the new standards, and, uh, it's going really well, large turnout, and I appreciate those teachers giving up some of their summertime for the training. Also, we've had a large number of school administrators attend the training this past week at Eckerd College, and, uh, I understand that went very well, a lot of good leadership strategies and so forth. And, um, also I wanna mention at CLO this week, every day this week, we're having a computer science summit, and we have teachers coming from many different districts around the state, so a lot of, a lot of our folks are leading that training, and so credit to Putnam County for all the work we're doing in computer science. So with that, thank you all for being there, and I will be back in the office tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does anyone have anything further?
May I make one announcement? Uh, this Saturday, uh, will be the celebration of Juneteenth. In the Crescent City area, they will be, um, recognizing Asa Philip Randolph. He was a member of Union Bethel Amy Church in Crescent City, and they're naming a highway, uh, a portion of seventeen in honor of him, and, and the ceremony will start at ten. Also, LaFara Davis is sponsoring a Juneteenth celebration at, uh, Palaka High. Saturday will be the vendors, all the food trucks and, and vendors there with various items that they've made, that will be Saturday. Sunday evening, even though it's Father's Day at five o'clock PM, they will be recognizing, uh, some people in, in the area, in, in Putnam County that have contributed to, to our, our community, to our children, et cetera. And that will be at five o'clock at Palaka High, and it's a, a formal like affair, et cetera. But anyway, I just wanted to put that plug in, because so much work goes into it, and, uh, just period, it's not a black thing, it's for all of us. It's for every one of us, because if one of our children looks good, Putnam County looks good. Yeah, and so, just if you get an opportunity, come by.
There's a lot of history, people really don't understand it.
Yeah.
Philip Randolph lived in Crescent City, you know?
Born and bred and, and.
There's a stamp of it.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. This meeting is adjourned.